Call to order the joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and Glendale Housing Authority. May we have a roll call for the city council?
Council members Draymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here.
And for the housing authority. Authority members Draymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Menci.
Here.
Harazian.
Yeah.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chairman Najarian.
Here.
May we have your report?
The agenda for the July 7, 2009, joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority was posted on Thursday, July 2, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay, anyone wishing to speak on these two items, item one and item two, please turn in your speaker card. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to speak on these items? Okay, Mr. Starburn.
Let me turn to.
Yeah, I'll read it.
I'll read item one into the agenda.
Acting Director of Community Development and Housing regarding Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Entitlement and Revised Action Plan for Fiscal Year 2009/10. At item 1A is, excuse me, council motion approving the revised annual action plan for the CDBG programs and authorizing submittal of the plan to the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Now with that, Jesteren.
Thank you, Mr. Starburn, Chairman Najarian, members of the Housing Authority and Mayor Quintero, members of the city council. Needless to say, this has been a very unique year as it relates to the CDBG program as reflected by the two agenda items we have before you today. The first item you have before you is a departmental or a department recommendation that the city council approve a revised fiscal year '09/10 CDBG action plan in order to incorporate an additional $113,565 as a result of a $98,030 increase in fiscal year 2009/10 CDBG entitlement funds from the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development and an additional $15,555 in CDBG program income. After March 24th, the city council or the city received its final formula entitlement letter from HUD, and it turns out that the US Congress approved a 3% increase in funding for the CDBG program, which HUD did not anticipate and which translated to a $98,030 increase for the city of Glendale. Usually HUD is able to more accurately reflect or to more accurately project if there's going to be an increase or decrease in CDBG funding and by what percentage, and usually the variance between the estimated formula entitlement and the final entitlement is less than $1,000, so this was very unique. At the same time, the city received an additional $15,555 in program income stemming from repayment of old CDBG-funded rehabilitation deferred loans. On May 13th, the CDBG advisory committee met and made funding recommendations for allocating the additional CDBG funds. The committee approved a funding allocation plan to allocate $19,449, which represents 20% of the increased entitlement amount to planning and program management. They recommended allocating $17,080 or 15% of the increased entitlement amount to social services and $77,056 or 65% of the increased amount to capital improvement projects consistent with the original funding allocation plan approved by the city council on March 24th. Within the allocation for social services, the committee further recommended dividing the $17,080 of additional funds evenly among the 16 social service programs already recommended for funding under the original plan. This resulted in a $1,067 increase for each currently recommended program as reflected in exhibit one of your report. Within the allocation for capital improvement funds, the committee recommended allocating the entire available amount of $77,056 to the currently recommended Home and Admin Youth Center Rehabilitation Project. This would allow Home and Admin to cover increased construction costs based on bids Home and Admin has received on their ongoing rehabilitation project. CDH staff is recommending approval of the CDBG advisory committee's funding recommendations for the allocation of the $113,000.
Okay, are there any comments or questions, Mr. Weaver?
Mr. Duran, in this bidding climate, why are the construction costs higher rather than same or lower? Is it additional work that's not anticipated?
We do have the executive director of Home and Admin here who could answer that question. My guess is it was probably a basic underestimation of the scope of work that was required for the rehab project, but if you'd like, we can ask Mr. Gregorian.
Mr. Gregorian.
I mean, if you don't mind, just what happened, I mean.
Good afternoon, Armand Gregorian, Mr. Mayor, honorable council members, members of the housing authority. As Mr. Duran explained, that additional cost is based on additional cost that the contractors asked for, additional work is not the way, let me explain this, we are not doing an additional work there. The scope of work is the same, but the details that came across are more and more. One of the major items that is increasing the cost is that city of Los Angeles, because we were going to have a fence around the building and one side of it is the county channel that is crossing there, so we were anticipating that we're going to have a fence all around with no concrete wall or nothing. So they, when they approved the plans, they asked us to have a three-feet-high wall, and in order to have that especially where the channel is, that will add six to seven additional foundation to have there in order to have that three-inch, three-feet wall there. So, and line item that we were anticipating that is going to cost us approximately $15,000 to $16,000 went up to about $70-plus thousand. That's just one item.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, let's have a motion in a second. Well, the cards are on 2B. Actually, Mr. Marion and Mr. Gregorian, did you want to speak on 2A or 2B? Got it, that's what I thought. How about you, Mr. Marion, did you want to speak on next item? Okay. Roll call, please.
Council members Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
At item two, Director, Acting Director of Community Development and Housing Regarding CDBG Federal Economic Stimulus Proposed Action Plan under the Federal American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009. At 2A is a council motion approving the proposed action plan, and 2B is a council resolution appropriating $88,934 to redistribute between various CDBG account categories.
Mr. Starburn.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the housing authority. I'm going to turn to Jesteren here shortly for the staff report, but want to make some prefatory comments, particularly about 2A, which is the action on the stimulus money. And that has to do with the process. As the staff report points out, the CDBG committee was asked to review the candidate projects on two different occasions, May 13 and June 17, if I'm not mistaken. As a result of that, Mr. Duran and staff have taken some criticism, both at the meeting as well as since the meeting, from individual CDBG committee members, I think questioning the motivation for that second review. Let me, lest there be concerns about his motivation, let me tell you how the second review arose. From a meeting between Jesteren and myself following May 13, Mr. Duran happened to mention to me that we were continuing to get evolving direction from HUD on the standards for these projects. And indeed, his concern was that by the time this came to the city council, we would have changes again in the HUD standard. I'll call it better clarification of the HUD standards for these projects by the time you'd see it. And indeed, at that point that we talked, there had already been some information that there would be some changes. And he was concerned regarding bringing you a committee recommendation when they hadn't had as much information at the time as the staff had about the standards. And my immediate reaction was then take it back to the committee and let's let them look at it again in light of what you know, granted it's evolving, but in light of what you know, make sure that this is still the position they want to take. And he did that. I think he took some abuse at the meeting out of concern as to what the motivation was behind the second meeting in consideration, and it was as simple as I've just described. Since then, he's received some communications that frankly questioned his professionalism, questioned his motives for pursuing it, and expressing concern that he might not bring to you a fully professional recommendation reflecting the committee's ultimate recommendation to you at both those meetings. And I want to say that in the time I've worked with Mr. Duran, that sort of activity couldn't be further from his thinking. He's about as professional a public servant as I've ever seen. So lest there be some feeling that somehow Jess or his staff were motivated by anything other than trying to keep the committee informed as to the evolving standards by HUD, I wanted to make that statement and clarify the record. With that, let me turn to Jesteren for the staff report.
Well, before you go on, Mr. Starburn, let me ask this question. The issue turns on whether a project is eligible or not.
Uh huh.
Is that correct? So it's plain and simple, the HUD regulations, it's either eligible or it's not.
Well, I'll let Jess describe it, because I'm not sure it was so clear even two weeks ago or three weeks ago. As I understand it from Jess, the standards by which these projects should be, or is being judged by HUD has been evolving. In fact, the city had a project that we first put forward wanting to make sure that we could have something shovel-ready. Well, what we found out later on after putting the project together was actually a street rehab project for South Glendale was no HUD wasn't going to approve that. So we had to quickly maneuver to pick a different project that would meet HUD standards. So my sense is the standards have indeed been evolving, but what we knew just before the June 17 meeting at least gave Jess some concern that maybe one or more of the candidate projects might not meet the standards. And indeed, what we know today is one of those does not meet the standards. But I think it's, I think even with that, it's still evolving a bit, but it's certainly more settled than it was several weeks ago. But let me, let me ask Jess to give you more detail on that.
Thank you, Mr. Starburn, Chairman Najarian, members of the housing authority, Mayor Quintero, members of the city council. The economic stimulus program is very unique. The real answer to your question is it's a combination of interpretation and application of the rules that were published and discussions, one-on-one discussions with our HUD representatives for clarification. Evidently, beyond the rules, regulations that were published, President Obama issued a memo called the March 20 memo to all of his executive department heads, including the Secretary of HUD and Secretary of Labor, for example, and gave them discretion to further define what would be eligible economic stimulus programs in their own departments. And that really threw us for a curve. It threw me for a curve, and I've got 30 years of experience administering CDBG programs. For example, HUD advised us that public improvements on South Glendale were not eligible. That completely took me back because, I don't know, eight or 10 years ago, we spent over a million dollars revitalizing Colorado, which is also a major commercial arterial. But under economic stimulus, HUD does not want to be funding commercial streets. They want to be funding improvements in residential neighborhoods, which we had to learn after we submitted the project to HUD and got HUD's feedback. The other thing that took us back was that HUD does not want to fund park and recreational facilities, including swimming pools, community centers, parks, skateboard parks. So HUD has determined, HUD secretary has determined that those projects will not be eligible. Again, we did not come to understand that until after Mr. Creo had been on the phone and spent several hours with our HUD rep describing our two community projects in Home and Admin and New Horizons, and HUD verbally and through email advised us that recreational facilities will not be eligible, and they've determined that Home and Admin is a, as a youth center, would be one of those recreational facilities. Therefore, the recommendation that we are making to the city council is approval of the committee's recommendations with one, really one change, and that is to substitute the Home and Admin project and the $137,000 and reprogram it to a East Garfield Neighborhood Revitalization Project and use the funding for that project instead, which is clearly an economic stimulus eligible project. And that's the essence of what we're recommending today.
Okay, why don't you go down the list and tell us what is going to be funded? Just, you know, let's have your report.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I think in that it's important to point out the committee's recommendation to you in total, based on what they knew at that time, and of course, this confirmation of the prohibition on recreation projects is one that we've only been able to confirm since the June 17th, but you should be aware of the committee's deliberations. I know the chair is here today and may want to add to that. Jess?
Thank you. So this report is a follow-up to the May 12, 2009, city council report regarding 5.3 million in workforce homeless prevention and CDBG economic stimulus funds that the city of Glendale had received, wherein the city council approved a preliminary CDBG economic stimulus funding allocation plan by funding category in the amount of $880,000 and a corresponding resolution of appropriation. The economic stimulus funding plan that was approved by the city council at that time is a two-year plan and included $176,020 for planning and program management, $132,000 or 15% for social services, $572,000 or 65% for capital improvement projects. And these proposed allocations and percentages are consistent with the funding allocation plan approved by the city council for the regular CDBG program. So we were following suit with the regular CDBG program. Then after the May 12 meeting, we finally received the implementation guidelines and rules, regulations for the economic stimulus program and the submission deadlines and HUD's priorities for the use of the CDBG economic stimulus funds. With this information, the city is now able to identify specific projects within the approved funding categories, category appropriations. As everyone knows, under the CDBGR regulations, HUD's emphasis is on shovel-ready public infrastructure projects that will create the greatest number of jobs and on social service programs that create jobs or lead directly to employment. Construction projects that are funded must have a goal to start construction by December 16th, and CDBGR projects are still required to meet the national objectives of the regular CDBG program, which are to benefit low and moderate income persons or to eliminate conditions of slum and blight in low-income neighborhoods. So on May 13, CDH staff met with the CDBG advisory committee and received the committee's input with regard to funding recommendations for social services and capital improvement projects under the economic stimulus funding allocation plan. At that time, staff was still in the process of analyzing the rules and regulations and obtaining clarification from HUD on HUD's priorities and requirements for the plan development and submission. In fact, as we've already pointed out, the staff was still getting clarification, direction from HUD on eligibility to projects as of late last week, which has been very frustrating for staff and it's been very frustrating for the committee. Also at that time, on May 13, staff was in the process of obtaining project proposals from city departments for the use of economic stimulus funds. So when we had our meeting on May 13, the advisory committee, we had not received any city proposals in order for the committee to be able to review and analyze both city projects and community projects at the same time. But even though things were still being sorted out, we needed to get input from the CDBG advisory committee and city departments as soon as possible in order to draft a preliminary action plan that needed to be developed and published by May 27 and submitted to HUD by June 5, even as a placeholder more than anything, knowing that HUD would give us feedback and give us an opportunity to resubmit a corrected council-approved final plan. And that final plan is due this Friday into HUD. So based on the information that was available at the time of the May 13 meeting, as Mr. Starburn pointed out, the advisory committee developed funding recommendations for the CDBGR action plan as follows. Committee recommended the full 10% or $88,000 for planning and program management of the program. The committee recommended of the social service allocation of $132,000. The committee recommended $98,891 to go to the GYA Youth Employment Program, and the committee recommended the balance of the social service funds or $33,109 to be made available for an RFP to the Community for Employment and Training Programs. Committee recommended of the allocation of $660,000 available for capital improvements. The committee recommended the Home and Admin Youth Center Rehab Project to continue to do more rehab work for the Home and Admin Project at $137,944. Committee recommended funding the New Horizons Family Center Child Development Center Project at $131,000, and the committee recommended funding, at the time, a generic city capital improvement project to be named or identified later, in the amount of $391,990, all of which totaled $880,934. Subsequent to the CDBG advisory committee meeting on May 13, staff did indeed receive two project proposals from city departments, one from the Workforce Investment Board and the Vertical Job Center, in the amount of $31,109, to provide expanded and specialized employment and training counseling and referrals to CDBG and income-eligible Glendale residents. Generally, under workforce investment, income-eligibility limits are lower than CDBG, and workforce cannot give preference to Glendale city residents like the CDBG program. So using CDBG funds would be able to supplement the WIA program and give preference to Glendale residents to utilize employment and training services at the job center. The second proposal that was submitted was a capital improvement project submitted by the Public Works Department in the amount of $660,000. So this proposal would have, would have used the full allocation for capital improvements. For a South Glendale Avenue public improvement project involving public improvements on South Glendale between San Fernando Road and Chevy Chase, the total estimated cost for the project was 1.3. So based on CDH staff's initial analysis, both of these projects met the purpose and the intent and priorities of the economic stimulus program. And as a result, on June 17, we had a second meeting with the CDBG advisory committee in order for the committee to consider the two new project proposals and possibly revise their funding recommendations if the committee agreed and deemed that these two new proposals were more consistent with the goals and requirements of the economic stimulus program. However, the CDBG advisory committee decided not to revise its original funding recommendations. Then after the June 17 meeting, through continued discussions, interpretations and clarifications from HUD, HUD headquarters and the local, our local representative, HUD determined that the South Glendale Avenue Public Improvement Project would not have been eligible under economic stimulus anyway. HUD determined that it does not deem commercial arterial streets as directly benefiting low-income residents, and in addition, it also determined and informed us that recreational facilities such as youth centers are also not eligible under economic stimulus. Under the HUD secretary's discretion, they do not want to fund recreational facilities. Therefore, staff sought and received an alternative project proposal from the Public Works Department, and that is the East Garfield Neighborhood Revitalization Public Improvement Project, which is an existing project currently in design and in need of additional funds. Currently, $242,000 in previous year CDBG funds is appropriated for this project to pay for alley widening and reconstruction of an H alley between Garfield and Windsor Road, which also supports our Garfield Gardens Affordable Housing Project and the Maryland Mini Park Project, and is also in the neighborhood of Roosevelt Middle School. As a result, CDH staff is at this time recommending city council's approval of a proposed CDBGR action plan as recommended by the CDBG advisory committee with the one modification to substitute the Home and Admin Project with the East Garfield Neighborhood Revitalization Public Improvement Project in light of HUD's ruling that recreational facilities are not eligible for CDBG economic stimulus funds.
Okay, any, Mr. Weaver?
So if we do not make the change away from Home and Admin, the city is going to be out $138,000.
The city council could decide to go ahead and include the Home and Admin Project. We can submit it to HUD. If HUD determines it's not eligible, HUD will probably recapture the $137,000.
And the East Garfield project that we've worked on for, Starburn, how many years? Three, four years? Was a crime area heavily, and the police cars couldn't make that H-turn in the alleys. We consider that a pretty significant problem to fix.
Because it's economic stimulus, and we are acutely aware that it has to be in the construction by December, would be the impetus for Public Works to prioritize that project and complete the design.
And right now, all the funding is currently coming from where for the Garfield project? Capital improvement and?
CDBG leveraged with GWP funding. GWP will be underground in utilities, and so they'll be making some electrical improvements themselves, including adding alley lights to the H alley.
So no component is capital improvement funds?
Well, I think it's all capital improvement. It's a matter of the source of funds. I don't think any of it is the general capital improvement funding.
Okay, so, oh, okay. Okay, not the general fund capital improvement?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments, Mr. Najarian?
Well, I think I understand what you're saying, Mr. Duran, but I have a couple comments. First off, I'm very reluctant to take away any money from the Home and Admin. And I understand what you're saying with the federal regulations and the color of money that we need to use. Couple questions. Number one, can't the argument be made that the modifications to the requirements for that money came too late, that we had an adjudication by one of our boards well before they modified that definition of the recreational center? I think, you know, hey, they changed the rules, fine, change it, but that's going forward. We've already made a decision on this. We've already had a group that applied based on the current set of rules and restrictions on that money. I would question the definition of recreational, what was it, recreational center?
Recreational facilities.
I think Home and Admin should be able to, if they've already put down a description of their activities, and I've been there, and it's not just a, it's not just, you know, a basketball court that they have. They do have instructional facilities, language, they have after-school care, they have many, many other components. So they may have been lulled into a sense of misdirection by following the original HUD guidelines when they made this application. I think they should certainly be entitled to modify and provide sufficient proof that they are not a quote-unquote recreational facility as HUD has defined it. My second thought is, is there any way we can backfill that money? And Mr. Weaver was touching on it. If this is going to a Garfield project or any other city project where we have funds allocated to swap that money out, as we did, we did with the pool, if I'm not mistaken, not an exact scenario that we have here, but I think it was very similar. We paid it to another project and backfilled it to the Home and Admin, or backfilled it to the pool at that point. So that's, you know, I'd like to explore or hear from you what sort of possibilities we have to deal with the, this change of HUD regulations so late in the game to continue the viability of this.
Okay, well, let's hear from the city attorney on the first point about the board and adjudication.
Well, I would have to just defer to Mr. Duran, and he's, he's been dealing with these rules and regulations. I will tell you that HUD gets to decide what its rules are. That's, it's always been the way it is. So unless we had actually had the money approved, which we don't, that would be a different situation. But my experience dealing with HUD on the affordable housing side is that they have wide latitude to determine what's the proper use of their funding.
Mr. Starburn?
Well, getting it this other way, Jess, you mentioned that the project could still be submitted. Can Home and Amen revise their project application before it's submitted to HUD?
I'd like to call up Mr. Carrillo. Mr. Carrillo has been talking directly with our HUD representatives and can probably give you more details on what HUD's thinking is.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Duran. Mayor Quintero, Mayor City Council, I did want to point out that we had spoken to HUD a number of times about the Home and Amen and all the other projects, and unfortunately, it's, the point is that HUD is changing some regulations, and we're caught with other cities throughout the state that had submitted recreational YMCA projects, and unfortunately, they've all been turned down. Now, my understanding is that we submit a project like Home and Amen, the whole entire application is thrown out, and we lose the eight-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. So what other cities are doing, they're doing a Public Works project, and then HUD has asked us to look at other sources of funding from the C D B G, whether it's program income, unallocated funds, other proposed funds to backfill a need that's out there. So at this point, if we submit any ineligible projects, the whole application will be rejected. It has been rejected once. The second time it is rejected, it means the entire fund is, application is rejected as well.
Hold on a second. You mean all of the C D B G capital projects? In this case, it would be Home and Amen, New Horizon, and the street project would all be rejected?
Our understanding is yes, they will all be rejected.
Eight-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars.
Eight-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars. HUD is very serious about these funds and has put a lot of restriction on them, and as we know, it's highly monitored and audited, so they want to make sure the applications are submitted correctly. I spoke to about six different cities and find a way that how we could somehow change it, and cities, even Pasadena, has to change their projects because of the new requirement. And again, HUD is suggesting for us to look at other sources of funding, other C D B G program reallocations to meet any priority need that's not there.
Okay, Mr. Drayman, you had a comment or question?
Yeah, not for Mr. Carrillo, thank you very much. I wanted to respond or to comment. The issue is raised about how the committee made its recommendations and then after the fact. I'm not persuaded by that particular argument because the committee doesn't make the decision. They recommend. We do. And that is, it is not after the fact in that regard, however.
That's who you asked, Mr. Drayman.
Yes, exactly. Yeah. You are so right, Mr. Najarian. In any case, however, I agree with my colleague, Mr. Najarian, that if we are going to attempt to use these funds for some civic purpose, some street project, for example, and so forth, that we should try to find a way to find a project, if possible, that we could use funds to backfill. And I think that would be, I do appreciate that suggestion by my colleague, and I'd like to hear more about that. I'd also like to know what, how tight a deadline are we on now? Mr. Duran?
The application is due on Friday.
Oh, that much time, huh?
Yeah, it's, yeah. That's the other problem and the other dynamic with the economic stimulus.
Okay, any other comments?
Wait, wait, wait. I'd like to know if there's an answer that you may have about that. I mean, it was suggested once by Mr. Najarian, and I'm asking a second time, is there, what about the Garfield Project? What about other projects where we may be able to free up funds?
Councilman Drayman, we did solicit project proposals from the different departments, and the only viable project that was proposed was the East Garfield Neighborhood Revitalization Project.
From whom?
From the Public Works Department. We also met with the Parks Department, and we met with G W P, thinking maybe there was an energy project that we could submit. And the funding that's available here, whether it's six-hundred-and-sixty thousand or three-ninety-one, wasn't enough for several projects because they were a lot bigger, or the timing wouldn't work out. So we did meet and talk with the other departments, and Public Works had the only viable projects. You know, Parks, HUD doesn't want to be doing parks. So it was difficult.
If I can, I don't think that gets to your question, though. Your question is whether or not we can find a place and possibly a source that would have funded Garfield that maybe now could be redirected to Home and Amen. I don't know.
How about libraries? I mean, we've got several library capital improvement projects. Is this money available for, and I know you're thinking Public Works, but maybe libraries?
Well, I think the problem we have now is, we have to deal with the projects we have, and the application due on Friday.
Right.
We're not going to be able to modify. In fact, we turned to Public Works because we knew Steve could get a street project ready, and that would have a lot of appeal. Well, even the South Glendale Avenue one didn't work, so we've had to resort to Garfield, where we know we can always use some improvements. I don't know what we previously had budgeted for Garfield, if it was even on our plan to do some Public Works, or whether we created this project knowing the need was there. So as a result, I don't know where we might go to to get other money that would be relieved by this project, but we can certainly go look for that. I can't tell you offhand that that would be.
Mr. Mayor, that is why I ask about the deadline.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, we have speaker cards. Zara Marion.
Zara Marion, good afternoon. Mr. Mayor, city council members, members of the Housing Authority. First of all, I want to reiterate something that, you know, anybody who has watched our meetings or followed our meetings has seen over and over again, and that's the appreciation we have for staff and the work that they do and the difficult job that they do. You know, I think anybody who watched the meeting would probably disagree with the fact that we were throwing baseballs or, you know, heaping mounds of abuse upon staff. We had some questions, and we had some concerns, and we asked those questions and had many of those concerns answered. Second, our appreciation for, you know, the city council and this body that has supported us when we have demonstrated that we have fully vetted programs and that we have looked at programs in their entirety. The rules that govern the C D B G R are tricky, extremely tricky, but they're, you know, they're two documents, basically. There's a forty-two-page document that was released at the beginning of May, and then there was a four-page document from President Obama that was released in March. Other than that, Mr. Duran is absolutely correct, and he has informed us that they were communicating with, you know, the HUD Central Office and the local office. In fact, he provided us with an email, you know, due to our request, from Ms. Su Young Choi. And I had a wonderful forty-five-minute conversation with Ms. Su Young Choi this morning regarding the Home and Amen Project and regarding the fact that she had said, you know, explained the concept behind why recreational projects like casinos, aquariums, zoos, and swimming pools were, you know, not being approved. Her understanding was that Home and Amen was a recreational project that was open to the public and that there would be no way of demonstrating that there would be primarily low-income persons served. I explained to her the situation. I explained to her the similarities between that program and New Horizons program as we saw it. The primary purpose of these funds are, and I'm going to use Ms. Choi's words because they're very eloquent, "The broader intent of the Recovery Act specifically, the goal of supporting projects should generate short-term job creation and provide a foundation for future economic growth." That is exactly the two factors that we use to determine, if I may, to determine that New Horizons and Home and Amen should receive part of these monies. In that sense, New Horizons and Home and Amen serve virtually identical purposes in this community. How do they generate short-term jobs? Well, they're capital projects, and Ms. Choi confirmed that generating forty to fifty construction jobs in the short term definitely works. In fact, the ratio that they're looking for, she said, is one job for every ten-thousand dollars. The second fact, the long-term economic growth. Well, the reason why New Horizons fosters long-term economic growth is because it gives parents a place to safely put their children, so they don't have to worry about their children, and they can go, you know, go out and pursue those jobs, work those extra few hours, and boost the economy. Home and Amen offers the same, you know, the same service. It's a safe place for the children. Categorizing it as a recreational facility, the way that Ms. Choi had initially perceived it, that's where the disconnect came, and that's where the concern came from the committee. The committee was concerned that staff, there was a miscommunication or not a proper explanation of the reasons why the committee recommended what they recommended. And Ms. Choi, even in today's conversation, thanked me for explaining that and making that clear to her. Now, I obviously understand that Friday is the deadline, and I obviously understand that we're under time constraints. But in these situations where the concern of the committee is, is that, you know, staff, and it's a difficult job, given how unclear and how confusing these rules have been, but staff needs to make sure that the understanding and the will of the committee and, in the broader sense, this body, is clearly explained to the people who are making those final decisions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Marion. You made your point. Mr. Weaver has a question for you.
Yeah. Is Ms. Choi going to make the decision?
From what I understood, Councilmember Weaver, Ms. Choi, her entire purpose is to protect her C D B G communities so that they don't lose the money. The difference she explained to me is that the C D B G R is, it has a special auditing organization that's run basically from the White House, right below the White House, that is going to make sure that these monies aren't used for those projects like casinos, zoos, aquariums. So as far as the final decision-making process, Mr. Duran in his email to us said that in the past, they've convinced HUD that these projects are viable.
You do understand the risk. You're going to assume the local individual that you've communicated with is going to be able to convince everybody from here to Washington to go that way, or we risk losing over eight-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars.
I, and I appreciate that, and that's not something I would want. Obviously, the greater good of the community is something I'm looking for. But I'm not convinced that, you know, us turning in a revised explanation is going to result in eight-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars being, you know, terribly whisked away from the city and re-appropriated.
Ms. Friedman?
I just want to say, I don't see where it's a question of whatever you turn in. It's a question of who's going to make the decision. Based on my federal experience, the local is not going to make the call. It's going to be coming from higher up. This case, I guess, Washington, and that communication is so tough, it can easily break down no matter what she says or puts in writing. That's my concern. Where's the risk to the city?
And I share that concern.
So we share it.
Ms. Friedman?
Forgive a couple of basic questions because I'm late to this process.
Sure.
So Ms. Choi, what's her title?
As I understand, she is the CPD rep in the Los Angeles HUD CPD office.
Is she someone you've communicated with before?
No.
So just because I am so new to this, is it common that the committee members will communicate directly with HUD like this?
Absolutely not. And, you know, it isn't, and it's unfortunate. In fact, she was not only surprised, she was almost excited that she'd said in her time there, this was the first time any local Community Development Block Grant committee member had ever contacted her to get clarity and to explain an issue. So it is, it's unfortunate that it doesn't happen more often, but during my time on the committee, I've taken, you know, I take my responsibilities very seriously, so I, you know, in terms of that, I'm willing to take the extra step.
So you were kind of lobbying her to try to get her to approve, to help facilitate this particular piece of funding?
I don't think lobbying is the correct term. I would say I was trying to get clarity myself for the basis of the decision because I was, you know, that's been lacking in this process because of the confusion and because of the short timelines. But I would say that I, you know, in response to her questions, to me, I clarified the situation. Lobbying, I think, is, you know, is a term that has some negative connotation in this political climate.
And I didn't mean that. I was just trying to get an understanding of what the conversation was exactly.
The conversation was about forty minutes on me getting some clarity about how they came to the decision they came. She explained that she had several discussions with Mr. Carrillo regarding the program, the Home and Amen Program, and then she went on to explain why recreational projects like the ones I had mentioned previously weren't allowed and why they were saying no to them. When I explained to her that Home and Amen didn't really fall into that category, she was thankful that I had clarified that because she hadn't been provided that information.
Since you have that clarity now, maybe you can help me. So Home and Amen has a recreational component, that this funding, if they were to get it, some of it would facilitate the recreational component.
Sure.
So now would that disqualify it because of that recreational component? In other words, would we have to prove that all of this funding was going to the other uses?
According to Ms. Choi, like New Horizons has a large playground on their facility. Part of their educational process and part of the day's activities is allowing those children time to, you know, have recreational activities. And by no means and by no stretch of the imagination does that disqualify New Horizons from receiving the money because they have a recreational component. In the same vein, this community well knows, Glendale well knows, and this body well knows, that Home and Amen is, you know, an educational facility for children that has a recreational component. And in terms of the C D B G R funds, in terms of supporting projects that generate short-term job growth and in the long term promote economic growth and stimulus, both New Horizons and Home and Amen serve virtually the same purpose.
Now, Mr. Marion, now let's be clear.
Sure.
This funding is going to a childcare center solely for New Horizons. This isn't going to the New Horizons current center. It's going to a new center for childcare only, and it's been that way from the very beginning. So don't keep talking about, you know, in essence, apples and oranges. This is not a recreational facilities, New Horizons, there's no basketball court there or anything else. This funding is going to a childcare center. So let's be clear.
Mayor Quintero, and I appreciate that. I respectfully disagree that it's an apples-to-oranges comparison.
It is absolutely an apples-to-oranges comparison, and I repeat, read the New Horizon Family Center Child Care Development Project. It's not for the old building that they've been at for years. It's for a new funding for childcare. Am I correct, Mr. Duran?
Yes.
Yeah, I am. Okay, thank you, Mr. Marion. Next, Armon Gorgorian.
Thank you very much. Armon Gorgorian, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Housing Authority staff. First, I want to say that I've been working with Community Development Department for the past twenty-some years. I have utmost respect for Just Duran and his staff. I have utmost respect for the C D B G committee, regardless if they voted to fund us or not fund us. Several times, they have not funded us. The only issue that I have here, and I'm all for rehabilitation of the streets, I'm all for not losing the eight-hundred-thousand dollars, I'm a member of this community, and the well-being of the community is very important to me. The only issue that I have is this, that after all these years, thirty-one years being in the community, and you as council members have been to our center, every single one of you, you are aware of our activities, and definitely, Community Development Department are aware of our activities. I do not see us as a recreational facility. We do use the sport, the cultural... We do use the sport, the cultural activities, the after-school tutoring, all of this stuff, we use that to keep those kids off the streets. We do not use the basketball court to make Magic Johnsons or Kobe Bryans. We just do that to bring them in, keep them off the streets, and it's negative activities there. As simple as that. I understand that we have no time at all. I wish we had some more time. I wish we would have explained to the people in Washington or wherever they are that they can't even pronounce Hometmen, they don't even know what Hometmen is, but at least we could have explained to them what we are and what we're not. We're still gonna do our job, we're still gonna take care of the kids, regardless of how your vote is going to be, but we are not a recreational facility. We just, that's a means for us to bring the kids into the, outside of the streets and outside of the gangs. That's all it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gorgorian. Mr. Allen.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council and housing authority, Mr. Starbird, Mr. Duran, Mr. City Attorney, members of staff, thank you very much. I'm here on behalf of the New Horizons Family Center.
Your name for the record.
Forgive me. Michael Allen. I'm a board member of the New Horizons Family Center, and I'm here on their behalf today to thank you all for your consideration of the CDBG block grant stimulus capital for the improvement of being applied to New Horizons' new childcare facility. We believe that the childcare and children's and family educational services that the center will provide are much needed by the community, and the sooner we get the project online, the better it will be for all the city. Again, thank you for your consideration, and we hope to see the block grant come through.
Okay, I have a question. Are you through?
Yes, Sean.
Yeah, I have a question for you. Okay, so, New Horizons Family Center Childcare Project, so this is a new project that hasn't been built yet.
That's correct.
Is that right? Okay, so, what street is this one on? I forgot.
Maryland.
Yeah, so this is a, a project on Maryland, that from the very beginning has been a childcare project, is that correct?
That's correct, Aaron.
Any basketball courts or any other youth activity?
To my knowledge, no.
So, it's basically what? Childcare for what ages?
Childcare through preschool. Actually, as far as the facilities and so forth and the programs, let me call up a gentleman who's helped in the planning of the actual center.
No, that, well, okay, go ahead. Call whoever.
Hopkins, would you come forward?
Yes, do it.
Now, this is definitely not planned as a recreation center, no.
Gary Hopkins.
Mr. Hopkins, what is going into this center?
The center's for infants and preschool kids, and the, someone mentioned something about the playground facilities. That's a health department, educational, daycare center mandated area, along with like a crib area and an eating area and a restroom, so it's all just part of the.
So, it's not the existing facility?
That's a brand-new facility on South Maryland.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's the final speaker's card. Thank you, Mr. Starbird.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, back to the previous question about possibly swapping out funds, I've got some more information. But I'd like first to comment on a couple of things. I think with respect to issues like this and getting opinions from HUD, I, I guess it's commendable that the committee chair and committee members want to hear it directly from the horse's mouth, but in those sorts of things, so we don't get two different and three different and four different interpretations, we should strive to have staff and committee members together when we have those conversations, otherwise we will get different interpretations of the same feedback. Two, I'm told by Steve Zern that we have $242,000 in previously programmed CDBG funds in the East Garfield project from a previous allocation. It's very likely that we could swap out a portion of that for the money committed to Hometmen, put the 137 into the East Garfield project, and then Jess is telling me frankly very quickly reprogram the previous money allocated for East Garfield into the Hometmen project and relieve ourselves of the constraints of the stimulus program. Now, we need to check all that out, but that seems to be a, a strong possibility at this point.
Okay, well, that sounds like, sounds like a plan, as they say, in government circles.
What I, what I would suggest, because we only have between now and Friday to put this together, one is to check out that aspect very quickly and tie down any, any loose ends that, that may exist there, so we can be confident we can do that. Two, if you wish, I think we, if we wanted to include the Hometmen project, we should have a conversation as high up in HUD as we possibly can to clarify exactly what the project is and to get a determination of whether we should or we shouldn't include it in our application before Friday. Now, I think this other course of action, swapping out the money, relieves us of any of that risk, and we should pursue that first. And frankly, I would think by the end of today, we ought to be able to figure out those numbers and come to a conclusion that we can do that or not do that. But that may be two courses of action we take.
Mr. Najarian.
I do like that idea.
The swap-out idea?
The swap-out. I may also suggest that in terms of getting to the people at HUD, we contact our fine federal lobbyist, David Turchin Associates, to help us if, if possible.
I'm not sure they're on contract with us currently.
And the, the third, somewhat tongue-in-cheek, the, the third point I want to make is when we start talking about recreational facilities, I just want to relate a story that, that happened to me a year ago, and it's when I was being trained as a AYSO coach and referee, and they said, the first thing out of their mouths, out of the, it was Aldo, the executive director, says, "How many people here think that AYSO is a soccer league?" And we all raised our hands, "Sure, AYSO is a soccer league. AYSO. S stands for soccer." Says, "Nope, you're wrong. If you think this is a soccer league, get out of the room." Well, what the heck is it? AYSO is a child development program that uses soccer as its medium. So, as we start to make definitions of what we think recreation is, and I was certainly one who thought soccer is clearly recreational, AYSO is a recreational issue, physical activity and games are certainly used for many, many different things, and that's just one example of what I thought was a soccer league. I was actually being instructed to be a child development instructor. So, as we play these games and try and struggle with these nuances of what is a recreational facility, what is a child development program, I think we sort of have to keep our eyes open, and sometimes we're surprised as to what looks like a, a game of soccer going on out there is actually a child development exercise. So, that's my little story.
Can I just ask, I'm, I, I'm a little, I don't understand your point exactly, because I would think that the government understands that too, that any city-sponsored recreational program is sponsored for that very reason, because it does take kids off the streets and it does provide recreation and, and for all of those reasons. So, I don't think that, I think they understand that and that they are specifically trying to exclude that.
I don't think they do, because that's clearly where a, an organization such as New Horizons, and I don't want to get into the New Horizons issuing it, but, but an organization that builds itself as a child development center is clearly entitled for funds, whereas a, another component that has recreation or exercise or games involved seems to be excluded. I don't think they get that, I'll be honest. I just don't think they do.
Well, I'll, I'll give you my perspective. 28 years in workforce development, the one, this particular center that they're going to build, not the other center, because that's a multi-use facility, let's put it that way, different age levels, et cetera, but this particular facility that they're asking the funding for, that is childcare. You can't place men or women in a job unless they have adequate childcare, and so that specifically is why this would fall under the criteria. I would say politically, the new administration does not want to find itself on news shows or anywhere else that they funded swimming pools and, and parks, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, they obviously are not interested in doing that. They want to focus on childcare and, and centers that provide after-school care, et cetera, et cetera, and that's where perhaps Hometmen in the future might fall under this category. But certainly, the general CDBG funds will provide for funding, as it has in the past for many years. How long have we funded Hometmen? At least 15 years that I can remember?
Probably 10 to 15 years.
Yeah.
And so HUD is very familiar with the Hometmen.
Right.
Program, because HUD has been seeing it for a number of years already, and we justify it as providing recreational programs for Glendale youth.
Right. In this particular case, this specific funding has, has a much narrower definition. So, for me, it's pretty open and shut. I mean, I don't see any private conversation with what essentially is a monitor, Ms. Choi. I mean, we can't rely on, on personal conversations with, with federal, you know, monitors based here in LA. Okay, any other comments, or Mr. Weaver?
Yeah. You know, I've been, worked on the CDBG budget for 13 years now, and I believe in all those years, staff can correct me if I'm wrong, I've always agreed with the committee recommendations, no matter what form the committee was in at the time that they did it. But, you know, I, I have a different approach this time, and I'll explain why. Of course, I say with all due respect, I don't think anybody below staff level ought to be calling any agency and speaking to them. If I'd done anything like that in the federal government, by my boss's knowledge, I'd have been in big trouble, even to clarify. So, I think that's the wrong way to go, as Mr. Starbird said, if you want to sit down joint and do it, even on short notice, I think that's the way to go, so everybody's on the same communication wavelength. Says that talk was made about change, HUD is changing their definition of stimulus money. Well, change is not the correct word. They're refining that, and that's coming from on high. Each level is communicating higher up, "Is this what you mean?", when you're collecting from all over the United States. Not a question, it's refining what every level above meant by what they said. And so, I'm going down, okay, do I want to risk the money out? We just voted to continue with the funding for, on CDBG, $260,000 to Hometmen, just in the motion before. I'm not comfortable in taking the risk, not with the federal government. There's too much chance that they will refine it down to the point where they will take the money, all 880,000. Now, if we can, as I asked the question, where was the other money coming from? Is there a way to manipulate and move other monies around that we can do both? There is that potential. So, if we can, it's a win-win in that respect, taking Hometmen out, putting the Garfield in, then from another source, backfilling into Hometmen, to give them the balance. Motion isn't constructed that way, but if that's what my colleagues end up wanting, I'm sure astute, the city attorney will give us the correct wording for that, but it's just too much of a risk, knowing the federal government.
Mr. Drayman.
Well, first of all, I don't see that it much matters how we characterize what a, what a recreational facility is. That really isn't even the point. The YMCA program, YWCA program has, does some of the things that Hometmen does and Hometmen does, many things they don't. Mr. Gorgorian is right. I am familiar with the, your facility. I'm a rather substantial booster of it. I have been since the first time I walked in the doors there, and it is not just recreational. It is that, but it's other things as well. But the point is, it is what, it's what HUD characterizes as being, not what we characterize it as being. That's, that's perhaps the bigger point. What saddens me is that we're having this kind of discussion at all at this point. It's unfortunate, but it, it is, it is where we are. As I said, I, I like the Hometmen program, I like the kids that are there, I've spent some time there, I am taken by it positively and favorably. However, where I am extremely upset is that we are out of time to find a project, it would appear, to assign these funds to and then backfill, perhaps, Hometmen. To the extent that we can do that after the fact, I'm all for that. Mr. Weaver raises that issue. I would be a second council member who would certainly endorse that. I did a moment ago when Councilmember Najarian suggested it or made mention of it, and perhaps there are others in the council that would be willing to look at that possibility. I am certainly willing to go there. I think for me, though, the, the important issue is that as an elected representative of the city, I am not about to roll the dice on 880-some thousand dollars based on one board member's opinion as to the risks involved. I'm not even willing to do it based on my own interpretation of, of parsing the semantics of this. I have a bigger responsibility than that, and I think everyone on this dais does. So, I can't go there. As much as I do like Hometmen and the, every opportunity I've had to vote to allocate funds since coming to this council, I have done, done so on their behalf. These two programs, and I'm not speaking in broad terms, New Horizons and Hometmen, but this specific allocation for New Horizons and this specific allocation for Hometmen are not the same. They're simply not the same. And it is not just basketball over Hometmen, by the way. It's a variety of things, including when I've been there, even, even music programs, everything from basketball to ping-pong and everything else. Anyway, I just want to add this. So, I will, I will be supporting the recommendation as is with the Garfield project for now, but I would certainly like to see us, if we can after the fact, try to find a way to make this work, even if it isn't through parks or public works, or, I want to see what we can do. I want, I want some sincere effort moving in that direction, if there's support from this council to do so. And I'd like to also add this, I am growingly, I'm becoming more and more concerned about the political flavor that I'm picking up in this process, and I have to tell you, I don't like it. I like it far less with CDBG than I do with other potential boards and commissions. I don't like seeing the specific agendas coming forward, or if I'm interpreting it incorrectly, and I may well be, the appearance of certain agendas, specific agendas coming forward. I didn't like it last year, didn't like it the year before, and I don't like it this year. So, I don't want to get into it any further, but I, I don't think that's the way to go. And, and those are my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments? Ms. Friedman, then Mr. Weaver.
I agree with what's been said. I don't think you could find a better use of public money than Hometmen. I really don't. It's a great facility, they do a lot more than recreation, but none of us know what the definition really is going to be when it gets up to the federal government. It sounds like they're not exactly sure. So, how can we risk $880,000 coming into the city? But hopefully, we can backfill some of that and find, free up some more funds, because it's a great, it's a great organization that provides a great service, and they have a lot of educational opportunities and, and classes and all of that, but I'm worried that if they see any part at all of that facility being what they consider to be recreation, that our entire slate of projects is going to go away. I, I don't know how we got into the situation where we only have until Friday. I don't know how long we've been looking for these projects. I assume it's been a little while. I hope we can find as many as we can between, in the next three days. And I also, I hope that nobody sees this as a competition between two different groups. It's not about that at all. These are groups that do very, you know, that do some similar purposes. It's about trying to get whatever money that we can get out of the stimulus package. It's about trying to get whatever money that we can get out of the stimulus package with as little risk as we can. So I think that everybody here kind of wants the same thing. We all want to see these, both of these groups funded, but we have to be sure that we can accomplish that. So hopefully, we'll move through this smoothly. We'll get whatever money we can into our programs and be able to fund both of these very worthy groups.
Mr. Duran, oh, Mr. Weaver.
Yeah, just a question. If we were to go down, what I think I'm hearing, if we go down the line approving this motion as it is, have we given enough in direction without putting it into a motion to look for the other sources and talk to higher up in HUD?
Well, I think, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Weaver, it would be useful in the motion if the council could indicate a desire to pursue first and foremost the exchange out of the CDBG funds in Garfield, if indeed the numbers prove out. Because if it's appropriate to include that in the motion with your approval, Jess believes we may be able to do that administratively as long as we know the city council's supportive of that, in which case it could really actually also benefit the commitment and utilization of the CDBG funds that were previously approved for the East Garfield project because HomeNetmen will be getting underway as quickly on their project too. So that may be the easiest and quickest way to achieve what I hear everybody's saying you'd like, which is to find a way to provide funding for HomeNetmen as well.
And how about speaking to higher up in HUD?
Well, I don't know if we have time.
Just for curiosity. You've got that direction. You'll do that on your end.
Yeah, I mean, frankly, if the Garfield switch-out works, then that's, that's the answer if your interest is in finding a way to still fund the HomeNetmen project. Because it keeps the East Garfield project even, gives them some additional stimulus money. And again, the first take is that that CDBG money could fairly easily be reprogrammed to HomeNetmen project.
Would you wait, Mr. Weaver?
And avoid the stimulus restrictions.
Mr. Drayman.
Well, I think my question was just answered.
Okay, I have a question. The previous, as I look at the chart here, the HomeNetmen facilities improvement for fiscal year '09, '10 is $260,000, right? And, but is that for the new center or was that money for the?
It's the new center.
Oh, for the new center. All right. That's one question. Then the other one is a question and a comment. The stimulus package, it's about employment, creating employment, et cetera. We're going to create very little employment here in Glendale or even in the surrounding facilities if the companies that are hired to do these improvements, including the city projects, if they come from San Bernardino, Long Beach, et cetera, et cetera. So is there something that we can do as a city, as a housing authority, to try and focus on local, either local companies and local employment for some of the labor positions?
That may be our local view. I'm not sure the federal government would necessarily agree.
No, I know that. That's why I'm asking. That's why glance at the city.
From their standpoint, anybody being employed is probably a good thing, but
I think that probably puts restrictions on, we look at the regulations.
Well, I'd like you to do that because I know Pasadena is very, very tight on their, on how they approach these issues. I know they go out of their way to encourage, so let's do what we can within the law, obviously.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, there actually is a federal program called Section 3 where we can, we can include language in the bid documents to give preference to local trades persons and the trades that the contractor is looking for. We can go as far as to use the job center to register trades persons that the contractors will need to contact for any new.
Good, I'd like to do that. I mean, quite often as we do the public works, I actually physically, I mean, I look to see where those trucks are from. And I mean, there are not that many large construction companies. We have a great Hopkins Construction that's doing the parks and the adult recreation center, et cetera. So we do have some good-sized companies here also. Okay, I need a motion if there's no other comments.
Let's see. Are we still moving 2A and 2B? Will we be doing both of those along with a modification?
Modification, I think, would be to 2A.
Right, probably best to make a motion separately for 2A.
Okay, so I'm moving 2A with the modification.
Further, I guess it's further direction to staff to find the switch-out funding for the, to switch out the East Garfield money for the HomeNetmen project.
Yeah, that's my motion.
And I need a second.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Stand on B, what do we do, Mr.?
Just adopt it.
Okay, then I'll move 2B.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Any other, anything else on the agenda?
No.
Will we adjourn for the city council?
Second.
We are adjourned for the city council.
Will we adjourn for the housing?
Second. Housing authorities adjourned.
I see you, but of your comments.